Hello, everybody. My name is Michael Sapienza and I'm here with Mema Carmo. We are excited to join you for the voice of the advocate session as part of the special session for ASCO Direct Summer Series. So we're going to both start by talking a little bit about how we got involved, you know, in the cancer world. So Mema, why don't you go ahead and start with your story and then I will pick up after.
Hi, Michael. Thank you so much for the introduction and I'm so happy to be here today. I have so much respect for what you built with the organization and the passion with which from which it came and the pain. And that's kind of how we all start out, right? We have something that impacts our lives and that thing transforms us. And so my mother was a nurse and I grew up watching her teach women in Liberia to become lay health workers. And I was doing helping her great papers at a young age and you know, with her with patients in the hospital who she would hold in comfort. Who didn't have support or care and so this service to others is in my DNA. So it seemed really natural for me when I got breast cancer at 31 years old to give back. I learned I had a tumor in my breast at 31. My mom again was telling me the importance of breast exams at 13. So I've been doing exams for a long, long time. And the lump that I found was just my life changed the moment I felt it in my breast. When I saw a doctor, got a mammogram and it came back false negative. And they kept saying to me, you don't have cancer, you're too young. But I said, I want to see a surgeon and have the lump removed. The surgeon, she pretty much laughed at me and told me that I was too young to have breast cancer to come back in six months to a year. Or when I was 40, at the time I was 31 years old. And mammography screening usually started at 45. And so in her mind, women get breast cancer in their 40s, so I wasn't an impet the profile. And so I should wait. And you know, when you're confronted with something like that where your body's saying to you, something's wrong. And professionally, your respect is saying that you're wrong. What do you do? And I followed my heart. I pushed for a screening and learned that I had after six months, I had triple negative breast cancer, which is the most aggressive breast cancer that is mostly found in black women. If I hadn't pushed for that, that testing and the biopsy, I would be dead today. And so laying in bed, it became apparent to me that my destiny was already carved out for me. I couldn't lay in bed and forget about the women that were going through what I was going through and who would die if I didn't do something about that. And so my promise to God was Tiger Lily. To find a way to educate other people about the importance of sharing their stories, asking their questions, challenging their doctors, and empowering others to be so advocates. And so I just told God, if I don't die, I will give my life to you in service to others. And that's how I started advocating. And now we're here 15 years later.
Mema, can you talk a little bit about Tiger Lily and what Tiger Lily Foundation does?
So Tiger Lily is my baby. I have a daughter Noel. She was three when I was diagnosed. And she finished high school two weeks ago. Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. And so Tiger Lily was, you know, born when Noel was three years old. So imagine having a three-year-old, under you have breast cancer, learning it's aggressive. And learning that maybe there's no treatment for that kind of cancer, right? What do you do? You, you ask God to serve. And I really thought about what I would call the organization, right? I mean, to me, this cancer space is not just about the cancer, it's about how you empower others to blossom and to transform and to be strong and be empowered, to be vulnerable, to open up and be fragile, but yet, you know, like a flower, like a tiger lily, right? Tiger lilies are my favorite flowers. The flower is a perennial and in the fall, the winter, the flowers, the flower petals fall down. If they, they fall apart, they die. But they don't really die. They, they're dormant. And they, they get, the soil nurtures them and they grow. And then when it comes to spring and when, spring and summer, the flower blossoms into this beautiful lily. And so I want anyone coming to Tiger Lily to feel like they could be like the flower, like fragile at the time of cancer diagnosis, but still strong and be empowered to, to grow and to blossom and spread seeds of hope with other people. And so that way, when they come to my site, they should feel the energy of transformation and how they can be the change. And so it literally began, to be honest, Michael, with me laying in bed, literally bald and thinking I was going to die and asking God to use me. And then I would just hear these voices in my head. I know it sounds crazy. We were talking at a scientific conference, but this is what happened. And just like, you know, call this person, go to that conference. You know, speak, tell this person your story. It would be at the gas station, it'd be at the, at the mall, it would be, go to this school and do the health fair. That's how I started out. I had no money. I was working full-time. I had no foundational experience. I didn't know like the power I have now always was in me, but I didn't always in there. But there is a gap because there are women, women who are dying of breast cancer under 45 years old at a, at a, at a pretty, you know, devastating rate. But dying because they were diagnosed at later stages, the more aggressive cancers. And many had no idea they could get breast cancer in the first place. They go to a doctor who would tell them, either your lung is nothing, just go home and come back when you're 40. No one gets breast cancer at your age. And then they were diagnosed with breast cancer, then they were taught, you're told you're going to do this and that and that, and that's it. They weren't even part of their healthcare conversation with their team. So I was like looking at all of the things that worked for me and things that didn't work. And I thought, how do I empower women, these young girls to know their bodies, know their bodies, be empowered to ask their questions and to get support during treatment? But as that, as the foundation grew with educating advocates to be that change, I began seeing how there were broken systems, right? You know, how can a doctor tell you that you can't get a mammogram? Why isn't it covered by insurance? Why were women not being offered clinical trials or genetic testing? Like, so what are things that are should be standard of care that were not? Like screening, again, like genetic testing, like trials? And also, how could the patient be the power behind the movement to change these systems? We all think the system's too big, right? We can't change this big system. But systems are made out of people, that one person at a time you can tackle and change their mindset to change this whole system. So we grew from the individual advocate, being her own best advocate to working with her provider in that system of care. And then we grew into policy work, you know, we're involved with science and research. And it's just been for me, very like surreal to see, I'm sure as for you too, right? You like began this thing for your mom because you're, you're heartbreaking, but you want to give her this living legacy that's you. And then you look back and it's like, what, 15 years? And that's the power of empowering others to be their advocates is that there is more, there's, there are more of us everywhere, right? So how do you give somebody that, that feeling and that knowledge to own that they can be that change and to empower and embody that? To go into their communities and advocate for themselves and others as well?
Yeah, Mema, that's incredibly inspiring story. Wow, I mean, congratulations too to Noel. Is that what you said Noel?
Noel, Noel.
Oh, I love it. I love that name too.
She's pretty, she's, she's, she's been my biggest supporter because people see you and I out there doing and speaking. But when I go home being a single parent these, all these years, the person that's waiting for me when I get home that says, mommy, you should go, you should go. Or if someone calls me for help at nighttime when I'm reading her story when she was younger, she would never say, she would always say, take the call, that person needs you. So I could never have done this without her. So I always acknowledge her when I do things because, you know, she is my why and she's my rock and she, she inspires me. So thank you for recognizing her.
Yeah, of course. Yeah. So just to give, you know, kind of a brief history of my story as an advocate. And maybe I'll just kind of share the kudos, really happy to join you today and so proud of what you've done. And no, it doesn't sound crazy, even though there is a bunch of scientists on. I think it's incredibly inspiring and I hope it will inspire them as well. So you know, my story began, I was actually a professional musician by training. I played the trumpet. I was actually living in Tulsa at the time. I was traveling all around the world performing and my mom called and she said, you know, Michael, we've hit a bump in the road. And she said, they found a large mass on my colon. And the first thing I said, well, okay, well, where's your colon? You know, I mean, like I literally probably, you know, I was 28 years old and I had no idea about any of this. And you know, went on Google and not good news, right? And really supported my mom through her journey and at the age of 59 on Mother's Day, she died. And I remember sitting in Georgetown, that's where unfortunately she passed. We decided not to take her home for hospice, but sitting in like the hallway and you know those hospital hallways, it's like so sterile and you know, all of that sort of stuff. And she had just passed away and I walked out of the room, my brother and my dad were still there. And I just remember thinking, this pain is a lot. Like I had seen her in so much pain for so many months and like just the anxiety and the fear in her face. And it wasn't the cancer, actually the death that was, was like so heartbreaking to me. It was just seeing that pain and you know, she had said to me as, you know, I was very, very, we were very close. I mean, she was one of my very best friends, especially once I graduated high school. You know, she said, Michael, I just want to live. I just want to live and I want to see you get married and I want to see you have kids and I want to see Paul and Josie and Matthew and dad. And, and so as I was standing outside that room that day, I said, we have to change this. We have to, we have to do something. I mean, the largest organization in the colon cancer space at the time was, you know, about a million dollar organization. And you know, if you look at all the other advocacy organizations and the amount that they empower and they inspire and they, you know, create this amazing energy. It was just, you know, I was like, we have to change it and I was motivated, my why is my mom, right? And, and that I always wanted to help people. I had always from the time I was a kid, you'll probably laugh at this. I, I would sit in my living room, listen to Billy Joel and Neil Diamond. I'm like, like, oh, what was I thinking, you know? But it totally inspired me, you know? And I used to, instead of pretending like I was a news reporter, I would pretend like I was like helping people. And I, you know, I had an adopted younger brother and sister who unfortunately were very mentally ill. And you know, I watched them unfortunately try to kill themselves numerous times and it like taught me a ton of empathy. It taught me to care, et cetera. And so we founded an organization called the Christopher Life Colon Cancer Found- Foundation, which I think you probably remember. And then in 2016, we merged with then the Colon Cancer Alliance, now the Colorectal Cancer Alliance. And we're now the largest patient advocacy organization in the world for colon cancer and we focus.
By the way, can we just pause right there? Like that is so freaking amazing. You have to remember, like, I always forget, but you have to go back to like, that is huge, right? Your mom, you were walking down the hall, you saw your mom's, you felt her anguish and you went through that with her and you said, I'm going to change this. And then now you're the largest colon cancer alliance or org in the world that a patient advocate began. That's huge.
Yeah. Yeah. And if we like kind of go back, thank you. I appreciate that. I, I, I am the type of person that's like, it's never enough. So I.
Me too. I'm the same way.
I really, really appreciate, I really appreciate that. And my mom would be hiding under the table, like if she knew we had even started a foundation in her name or anything like that. And I was going to say too, Mema, I love that, the way that you described the Tiger Lily metaphor. I'd never, I'd never heard you do that before. So I love it. It's really, really awesome.
Well, you know what's crazy? We're both so busy. We never really talked before. I mean, like we have so many common friends, but I remember watching you grow apparel as I was growing as well. And I was like, between single parenting, working, building the foundation, you know, traveling the events, all that. I'm like, he's so awesome, a rock star. And I'm going, going, going. And everyone's like, you guys should connect. You're doing like similar advocacy work. And now God has brought us, you know, full circle.
Yeah. Well, let's move on to the next question here, which is, you know, can we define, you know, why we think the voice of the advocate is like important in healthcare delivery and care? You know, why do we think our voices and not just our voices, but obviously the people that we empower and all the other patients and survivors that are, that surround us? Why do we, why do we think that's important?
Well, you know, one of my friends, Julia Maues, who you may know, Julie always says that patients have a PhD in cancer, a personal history of disease and cancer. The provider has a history of treatment of the disease, but we have a PhD in cancer. So our expertise is critical, right? We're living with a body that's done something that we understand by living in this body. And when I first heard her say that, I was like, wow, that's so brilliant. Because when, when you're sitting in that chair, to your point, and you're feeling that anguish and that fear, your body's doing a thing, there's nobody else who's prepared to speak about that journey. And every part of that, from beginning of the words, beginning of the, when you begin to feel something is wrong to hearing you have cancer, to making those decisions, you know, to the entire spectrum, even to in terms of science, you know, like designing clinical trials. You understand the best what to do because you're living in that body that's done that thing, right? And that thing drives a person more than it will to, to live. When you know your life's in a stick, to your point here with your mom, even with me, you know, I thought, okay, I don't know when, I don't know if, I don't know how. But whatever time I have, I have to do something that will change the world for the better. But people who, people who don't even would never know my name will know that, they will be touched by my work. My work will touch and impact their lives. And so that's kind of how I started and so many patients, what I love the best with my job, people come to us and they're like, I need support and they're afraid and they're overwhelmed and they're just like so broken and scared. We get to make them into this beautiful Tiger Lily. They come through the programs and they're just, literally, I love watching a girl. We have videos and we zoom, video chat, we zoom and then she'll be like, you know, with a hoodie on, they'll be like just overwhelmed like people are. And I get to hold a space for this woman. I get to help her breathe again and then, and then be over time, get through treatment and become this fearless warrior to then go back. And then one of the girls we recently talked to is now going into healthcare, going to med school. Another one's becoming genetic counselor. She's changed her degree and it's always like, not only were they empowered to get through the journey and use her voice for power, but now they're going to help to change other people's health outcomes. And that's where I, where I find the biggest gift is that when you light somebody else's candle and they have that candle and carry that torch forward, light the next person's candle. That's how I feel like our work's important in it. And I never imagined too, that the power that we have to change healthcare policy and science and research, you know, like we have patients that are now working with pharma and with scientists to work to design clinical trials and to change how studies are being, you know, being perceived by the black community. We're changing policy around diversity and inclusion. We have an inclusion pledge that now has 18,000 signatures, you know, and it's growing. And so, you know, we're now helping again industry to learn how to really put patients first. And if you remember back in the day, it wasn't like that. And so having patients say to, you know, go to the doctor, go to pharma and go to people who are stakeholders and say, here's my voice, hear my voice, respect my voice. And we've managed to change the system around. So now it's where the patients are at the top advising and pushing forward. There's no agenda. What about you? What about you though? How would you, how have you seen the patient voice change over time?
Yeah. Well, I was going to say first, I think like you kind of touched on two things there, which is like the medical advocacy piece of being an advocate, right? So it's like, I think about the HIV AIDS movement and the breast cancer movement and other movements, right? You can even say heart disease or diabetes or even ALS now, right? It, it started by us, like the reason why they made these advancements was not because of the billion dollars, billions of dollars that pharma put in, which is really important work. Don't get me wrong. Of course it is. But it's because of patients like yourself, caregivers and advocates like myself, you know, folks coming together to really push the science, like you said. Like this is not okay that this is happening or that's happening. And then I think the second thing I feel is important for me is like community, right? I'm sure like all of these women that come to you, they don't want to feel alone, right? Don't want to feel alone. And, and I'll just give you a brief example and I won't say the person's name, but two days ago, I sat in front of a woman on Zoom, unfortunately, who had lost her mom in December from colon cancer. She was 29 or 30. And she had lost her mom literally the same age that I was when I lost my mom. And within three minutes, we're both crying, right? We both had connected. We both had this common community together. And you know, it was, it's just like those beautiful moments for me as an advocate, like that's what it's all about. Like that is what it's all about is, and that's why it's so important. That person now, and I've, you know, I've, like you, I've done this with thousands of people. And you know, I want to feel like, you know, those now, those people now feel like they have a home or they have a community or they have a place to go. And it's a safe place for them, you know what I mean? To talk and to share and to feel and to cry and whatever it is that they want to feel.
I love that. That's exactly what I wanted. I wanted people, even when you hear the words, you have cancer, to feel that your provider is holding this sacred space for you. You know, when I got diagnosed, I went to see a doctor to figure out what I would do with my surgery and, and you know, my, my next steps. And the one person, one doctor said, just cut him off. I remember sitting there going like, what? And I just, I just said, thank you. I left. And the next doctor I saw, just very not, you know, not engaging. The next one I got, the third one, I went to her office and I remember the sun was setting. And I was so, I was terrified. I was shaking like a leaf. And I remember putting on the gown, waiting for her in her office. I had my knees under my chin, like, you know, like when you're sitting in a chair, I was just like shaking like this. And she comes in and she says, hey bud. She said, and she pulled her chair next to me in front of me and she just went like this and she's like, hold my hand. And she just talked to me. She talked and talked and talked and over time I could breathe. My feet were on the floor. She leaned into me. And at some point I realized the sun had set. She was with me and she said, I got you. I'll be with you the whole time through this. Like that's what to me, what healthcare providers should be about, like that is what compassion is, is compassion, is community. She, she transformed my entire journey. She was with me in that space, made me feel so safe. And I thought, I can give somebody else this feeling of safety and community and compassion, like that is what it's about. And I remember literally when I had my surgery and I came for my checkup and I'm like, I have an idea for this thing called Tiger Lily. And she's like, what is that bud? I was like, here, I wrote it down for you and I'm going to do that and that. And she goes, well, just take care of yourself. Just get better first. I'm like, but I want to do this right now. She goes, well, tell me about it. And we talked about it and she's like, I'll do it, you know? So
That's amazing.
She and I still, she and I still talk. She's still part of my community.
That's amazing. Yeah. That makes me think of my mom's nurses at Georgetown, actually here in DC. Like I'm best friends with like three of them still, 11 years later, right? She's, you know, they did similar things. They like, I mean, I, all of their names, Kate, Julie, Lacey. I mean, I can, you know, I know every one of them and they just became like literally part of our, part of our family and was like part of my mom's community. Let me go to the next question. So what do you think is the hardest part about being an advocate?
For me, the hardest part is that you know, we are the thing, right? People always seek for external solutions, like we are the thing that are driving the change. It's not somebody else. It's, we are that person. We're the ones that are having the ideas, we're innovating, we're building organizations, we're transforming systems that have, that have historically been not patient centric. And for me, the hardest thing is like, you know, it's, I wouldn't say it's hard, it's just that you have to have that fortitude, right? Whether you're having a bad day or somebody you love is sick or your child's not well, or somebody dies that you love, like you have to get up and go forward, right? But also I think that that's maybe who I am. I didn't know I was this strong, that I was built for this thing. So I would say that I think that's hard, but it's kind of like, it shows you who you are, your character. I see the hardest part is like losing people and having to get up and go forward. I think that's the hardest part, like when you've worked so hard to help somebody and you've worked to inspire them and they work hard, they push through treatment, they pray and they fight and they beg. And they ask you what to do and they pray to God and they have the faith. And then you talk with them every day on FaceTime or Zoom because you get close to patients, you become friends, right? They, they text me, I mean, people text me all day, every day and I love them. I love them. They've become my family and part of my DNA as well. And then, then one day the phone doesn't bring, they won't call as much, right? Maybe it's two days past where you don't talk with them and they can barely text and the husband picks the phone up and says she can't text. And a sister sends you a message saying she can't swallow. And then one day you get the call, you get up to like three missed calls, you know? For me, that's the part that I just, it breaks me every single time. Someone told me once that, he said, you feel too much. You're not made for this work. You can't feel everybody's pain. You can't carry this, these, the burden of them with you. And I said, but their spirits are not burdens to me. Like this is why I do what I do. If I could love somebody so hard. Isn't the song I love by Sarah McLachlan who says, I'll kiss you so hard, I'll take your breath away? I feel that with all my people I love, I hold them so hard that like we, we breathe in together and I just say, I'm with you. Because I think it's more, more fearful than knowing that you're dying and you can't stop that train from coming. So that's the hardest part for me, but that also is very beautiful, right? That you're with them throughout that time when they can't tell their kids how they feel or their husband. And then loving them through that and knowing they're gone, but the pain then, I take the pain, I feel it and I just turn it on its head into passion and power and I move forward. It gives my train more steam to go forward harder and faster. And then know where I'm going with laser focus and not accept no for an answer. Yeah. So yeah, what about you?
Yeah, it's, it's the same thing. I mean, I, the first patient I met, Jen Puglisi, she was a 33-year-old young woman with, you know, a son, Rocco. And she died a year later on Valentine's Day. Second patient I met, Erica Paul. She was 29 when she died. Third patient I met, I mean, I, I could go on and on and on, right? And I have had to build some, some walls. Meaning to protect my, my own self.
Your mental health, yeah.
Mental health, but at the same time, exactly what you said, it is what motivates me. And I mean, yeah, I still, I still navigate patients, even though we have, you know, tons of navigators on our staff and, and all sorts of things like that. I, I still do it because it is what, you know, fuels myself to continue to help others to raise more money to, for research and for screening and for, you know, caring, et cetera. I, but it is hard. It is hard, I have to say. But I also agree. There's something about our experiences that allows us to have special relationships with those individuals because we've seen it happen. And you know, a lot of times people may not want to talk to their husband, their wife, their partner, their friends, because they're afraid of upsetting them, right? Like if they're dying or if they have something to say that they're scared, they don't want to make their husband scared or their wife scared or whatnot, right? And so I do feel like we have some, a sense of responsibility there, which is good. Like you said, it's like this sweet and tender thing, but it's also, it is also hard, hard on your soul. And I, you know, sometimes like I call my husband Nathan, my, my no cancer zone. And I do feel like I have to have that, right? I have to have that place where, where, you know, I can go outside and go for a run and not think about cancer. Although I'm sure I always think about it, right?
You can't stop it.
I say that, I say that I'm not going to, but, but I always do. So I think.
I love that you said that though, because my thing is I do like, I wouldn't call it radical self-care. I call it like, I mean, it's like a sacred, deep, intense, you know? I, my self-care is like on steroids, you know? Cause I need to have that because my body takes on the worry, I take on the energy, like I, this may sound weird to you, but I, when someone calls me in that space of like transition, I literally feel where she is. I feel like I'm in her bed with her, in her, in her body and I, and I just, I don't know how, I just, I just feel like I'm with them. And I, and I, I just, I don't want them to be alone when they die. I don't want them feeling, because you're in your body and you're drifting out of your body and there's. So I'm with them and I'm a single parent as well, running an organization. So I do a lot of self-care. So in the mornings I get up and I meditate for about an hour. Wasn't always that good at it, but I just, you know, take time to honor my breath and feel my breath and know I'm still here and that Mema is still here, not Mema, that cancer warrior. And I pray, at the time of my meditation, pray, I do tapping, I do light work. I have a sound bowl, I do crystals. I'm very like, I'm very like, I just, I just, I write, I talk to God, I journal. Light a candle for those who are lost and those who are hopeful and those who I have to still work to empower. And then I go for, for a run. For me, running is my safe space, my no cancer zone, why I just run. And I just, I can feel my heartbeat, you know what I mean? I think that we forget how blessed we are at times. We're busy saving the world and forget that we ourselves need saving and loving and nurture. When I'm running, I can feel the air going in my lungs, my heart beating. I'm like, oh my God, God is here with me in this moment and my heart's still beating and I'm still alive. I deserve this time to honor myself and I run and I go to the gym and do weights. Then my day starts. And at nighttime I do have same, like my room's really like cozy and safe and there's like ambient lights and I meditate at nighttime too. So I give myself the bookended like in the morning to kind of get up, greet the sun. And I know I rest a lot on the weekend, I sleep a lot on the weekends and take long naps and so I can do what I do well, right?
Yes.
I give other people that love and care.
Yeah, that is so true. That self-care, no matter whether it's running or whatever it is, it's like I wouldn't, I, you know, you would burn out, right?
Oh, easily.
Yeah.
Cause we do burn out at times, but it's like, I can't burn out. If I don't give myself that care of you, we won't make it. So I keep preaching to people, self-care, self-love, empowerment, I'm like, I don't empower myself too, to be that person, that healer for my, for me. And that's how I can go on, you know, as I, I have to do that. And but also the thing is I learned that, when I learned things like that, I help people learn that too, help patients learn that too. I share what I learned for myself with them, the importance of loving yourself. And even if you have cancer, you're still a person. I share what I learned for myself with them, the importance of loving yourself and, and even if you have cancer, you're still a person that has. Cancer is in your body, but you're not cancer. You can still self-love, you can still self-care. When you get, uh, when you know you have cancer, your body has this little disconnect. It just kinda betrayed you, right? So you kinda detach from your body. So I tell my patients that you're still your body. And you have to still care for the parts that are working for you. Give them love, energy and, and, and hope. So self-care does that for me and for many of my patients as well, so, um, yeah, love it.
Well, I think we are close to out of time. Mima, do you wanna say any, any closing remarks? I mean, I think for me, I, I just, you know, wanna thank you for being so open. And, and honest and, you know, I'm, I'm very grateful for the life that I have. I say that all the time. I'm very lucky to be doing what I. Do. I wouldn't have met my husband. I wouldn't have met many of my best friends and people that I call my family. If I wouldn't have been an advocate and, you know, I, I, if, I just say like, I am blessed and I feel very, very lucky that. Um, I've been able to do this. So I often say that my mom's passing is the worst and the best thing that has ever happened to me. What about you?
I felt the same, you know, getting cancer was the worst and the best thing. Um, before cancer, I was more, um. You know, I told my mom when I was little, I wanted to love for a living, love people for a living and serve others for a living. And she's like, uh, you, you're not gonna get paid that much dude. Like she didn't say it like that, but he was like, you know, that it's not gonna work for you. We gotta pay the bills and you gotta have a life and pay the, so, but, so, um. For me, but I just, I just have my heart just wired to love, right? To serve others. So I was gonna be a nun or in the, go to the B school, but I have a very foul mouth, so I would never, never have survived in the, in the, you know.
Hey, you've been good today.
I've been good today, but not back in the day. So for me, having, and I was not, I kept asking God, like I'm doing government contracting. It's important work, but it's not what I'm here to do. I'm not really expressing all the gifts that God's given me in this world to express in my lifetime. So when I, when I got diagnosed, I found myself, of course devastated, I'm afraid, um. And so unsure of my future, but I learned that I design my future, not a disease. I design my moments, not cancer. I create the next step for myself. I'm not any doctor, scientist, whoever. And I can work with them to co-create everything, but the other things rather, but I designed this moment of my life and those going forward. And when I made a choice to start Tiger Lily, people would laugh at me and you're like, what's that? And it's not gonna work. There are bigger organizations out there, bigger than yours that are. That doing this work for many years. And I was like, one day they'll know my name, one day they'll all know my name because. I know what God told me, what he talks to me about. I know what I'm meant to do in this world. And um, you know, it's, it's just things I was, I used to feel so small when I go to conferences and I speak or go to a church. I'm like, look at all these doctors and these. PhDs and scientists, but I just began to really just, I remember going to, at every single first stage, I would get there and I would be quiet. I'm like, no one's talking. What do I say now? And I would just ask God what to say. I would say whatever came to mind. And when I was, was speak, people would end up getting up and clapping. I'm like. What are they doing? Why? You know, and they come up to me after and start crying and I realized that there is a gift that I had, that I have, that gift is love. My gift is vulnerability. The gift is my ability to see patients and see their soul, what they need. And then to impart that information to the scientists and researchers and doctors and caregivers and loved ones. And the gift is to love other people in their most challenging times. And so. Um, it, it grew and so I, I know that I wouldn't be who I am today. Um, I'm always scared before I speak at anything. Never changes, cause it works so important to me. Um, but I would never have had the friends I'd made. I would never have had this, the people that support Tiger Lily. I mean, to like you to have a little ceiling of an idea that now nationally and or global, that's huge, right? But it's never, it's never done for me. It's never done till I'm done. Um, so I read something one day saying that I'm, I don't, I don't stop till, I don't stop when I'm tired, I stop when I'm done. So I'm not done yet. So I, so this work has been beautiful for me. It's been hard, but it's. I wouldn't choose any other path. Even when I get tired, I wanna stop. I just, I cry, I get whatever. I'm like, okay, I'll just start, start again tomorrow. Yeah, like you get up and start again, so. I, the work is more important than, than my fears or my angst or my overwhelm. Because people's lives depend on what you and I do and so. Together we fight the good fight.
Well, thank you for joining us and thank you everybody for, for being a part of the Voice of the Advocate session today. Thank you.
Thanks for having us. Thank you, Michael.